February twenty second, twenty twenty one at seven P M. This is the study session meeting for the city council, city of Waverly. The mayor and council have determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical due to the covid nineteen pandemic. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, I have a code section twenty one point eight permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor necessary staff, necessary staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. For full disclosure, I am not in the city council chambers this evening. I am on the road for work. The video audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Comments for items that are on the agenda may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members or by calling in three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. I'll officially call the meeting to order and ask City Clerk Guyer to connect the roll call, please.
Both four here.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kengis.
Present.
Rothie.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome back our guest council member Linda Appkmeier. Oh, I don't see that she joined us this evening, but had she, she would have been more than welcome to return. Item C is approval of the agenda as presented. Entertain a motion to do so.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Drinkow. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. The agenda is approved. First item of business under item D is a community highlight. Wanted to recognize the Waverly Shell Rock High School Girls Wrestling Team twenty twenty one state championship. They had an outstanding performance. Most of us probably followed along and saw a lot of wonderful updates of their progress. Here's a photo of them at that tournament as I read the wrestlers and coaches off. Got Addie Jewell, Alexis Johnson, Annika Barans, Avery Meyer, Brynley Meyer, Emma Jones, Emma Seward, Eva Diaz, Eva Heisey, Gail Robinson, Hayden Snyder, Kaylee Herval, Carissa Oldenberger, Cara Di Amusi, Kaiser Klein, Lauren Seegers, Macy Smith, Madison Diaz, Madison Hendricks, Mariah Cooper, Marley Hagerty, Mackenzie Weedler, and Nicole Miller Cummings, with head coach Eric Whitcomb, co-head coach Josh Meyer, assistant coach Alina Diamesi, assistant coach Jacey Meyer, volunteer coach Rusty Hager, and volunteer coach Andrew Snyder. Also, we have their managers Carly Steyer, Ella Mason, Hallie Gerz, Kaylee Tellinghueson, Kelsey Wozibka, Landry Bur- Burgart, Madison Olman, and Maya Wagner. So, as some of you may have caught on Kway this morning, I feel that it's always important, and I think I can speak for the council on this as well, that we recognize our youth and their accomplishments. These are no small feats with all of the time and effort, not only by the athletes but by the coaches and the managers and also their parents, getting them to the level that they are. This is, you know, sports in our elementary, middle school, and high school builds team atmosphere, building and how we're gonna, you know, be in the work environment in the future. So, these are great accomplishments. Any council have any comments they would like to add?
My only comment is this is just great to see that this has grown. Believe that Waverly hosted the first couple of years that they had a state wrestling tournament for the girls, and this year it moved to a larger location because it has grown and there are more participating in the sport, and it's nice to see that and that the Waverly girls are still maintaining their level of excellence.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I, it's just wonderful that they have the girls wrestling. I'm so excited that they, that they did this and started this. And, you know, my daughter is kind of going back and forth, do I do gymnastics or maybe I want to wrestle? So, coming from a wrestling family and seeing how excited everybody gets, and she, it just, she's gonna be, have to make a difficult choice pretty soon, I think.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much. I do have certificates we'll be getting to the school for all those that were named for their portfolio to say. Item E is the acknowledgement of appreciation. Mayor and council recognizes former commission members for their service on boards and commissions. This list includes Brittany Dirks serving on the Economic Development Commission from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty one, Lance Gritters with the Planning and Zoning Commission from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, Linda Hovden on the Historic Preservation Commission from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty, Linda Schraggi on the Cable Commission from twenty ten to twenty twenty, Liz Wertz on Leisure Services Commission from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, Mark Hanwald on the Economic Development Commission from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty one, Mary Ventuoh on the Historic Preservation Commission in twenty twenty, Paula Stevenson with the Economic Development Commission in twenty seventeen through twenty twenty one, Peter Newell on the Historic Preservation Commission from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty, and Sharon Abram on the Golf Course Commission from twenty eleven to twenty twenty one, and Tasha Burrell on the Leisure Services Commission from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. I'll appreciate their efforts and their time commitment to those commissions and being out there to help on these different things and push for, you know, change and furtherance of the community. So, any comments from council on these acknowledgements?
It's always great to see people taking active interest in their community. There's a lot of years of experience from these people, and I'm happy for the years they've served, and I'm also happy for new people stepping in to take their place. So, it's always great to get new people in these commissions and kind of these leadership positions. So, I want to encourage anyone who's interested to go to that online forum and sign up and express an interest, and we'll find room for you to help serve.
Absolutely. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else?
So, you know, obviously you want to thank the, those participants, but, you know, sometimes the unsung heroes here are the families. As we all know, our families have to put up with us sitting in these meetings every evening. So, hats off to all these families that have to, you know, do without their moms and dads and so forth.
Absolutely.
And I'll just put a plug in for our guest council person program so that if people want to learn more about city government before committing themselves to a commission membership, it's a great way to learn about city government. You can contact any of us on the council or Carla at the city hall to sign up.
Absolutely. That's an excellent plug there, Ms. Rothie. All right. We'll move forward into item N or F under the study session calendar. Item one is the Municipal Housing Commission update. Believe I can hand this over to Bill initially, but we also have Rebecca Los. Is that the correct pronunciation?
Yes.
Perfect. That will be delivering some information, I believe, as well.
I don't have anything, Rebecca. You can go ahead.
Okay. Well, um, I don't know how many times I've done this, so we'll just kind of repeat ourselves. One of the big things that we've all worried about this year was covid nineteen. Fortunately, we have not had any issues with that in any of our housing and stuff, so we're really, really glad for that. We also were very fortunate with the help of Bremer County Health and then Clayton, Clayton Drug out of Sumner. We got covid vaccine clinic here at the Waverly Homes and the Waverly Manor and Red Cedar Place on the eleventh, and we were able to vaccine sixty-eight residents and a couple of staff. So, everybody was so excited to get that first vaccine done and so we can all eventually get back to our lives. So, we've been very fortunate, and we very much appreciate the Bremer County Health Department and the Clayton Drug out of Sumner for ta- making these steps for us. The other things, of course, covid has slowed down the opening of, slowed down the opening of our new building, Red Cedar Place. It is open. We have four apartments that are occupied and one more should be occupied shortly. We need to get more in there, but at least it's nice to see cars in the parking lot and the people that have moved in really like it. So, we're glad that that's going well. We just have a few more apartments to rent. We were fortunate during the last couple of weeks when the, it was so bitterly cold that all the furnaces and the boilers and stuff kept working, so everybody stayed nice and warm. The main thing that the Housing Commission worked on this year was to get classification and pay plans set up for all employees of the Waverly Housing Authority. Bill helped us a great deal, giving us information through how the city set theirs up and everything. So, this is something that's needed to be done for a long time, and we finally finished it up. So, everything was set up in the budgets for this next year. So, right now, we're pretty full in the Waverly Homes. If you don't know, we have three properties. We have the Red Cedar, which is the new one, and we have open apartments there. The Waverly Homes was our original property that opened in nineteen seventy, and it is full. The Waverly Manor is a three-story building that opened in nineteen eighty, and we do have some openings there. It was kind of a sad last couple of weeks. We had our two oldest residents that had to move on to nursing, and one went to nursing and one went to assisted living. One was ninety-six and one was ninety-five. Ninety-six-year-old had lived with us for twenty-nine and a half years. The other one lived with us for, she was with us for nineteen years in the manor, but she and her husband also lived at the homes. And I could not come back with the information as to when they moved in over there. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just thank you for that report off the, at the beginning here before any other council comments, but very informative and nice to know that we're full and we're taking, also, we're, our community's taking care of our residents there with covid and other considerations. So, that's, that's always good.
Rebecca, I've got just one question for you with, with your, you know, being able to avoid having covid outbreaks in, in the manor and in the homes. Did you put into place some kind of visitation policy or something along those lines? Or, or were you fortunate in, in just not having an outbreak in your facilities?
We, we didn't put in any actual visitation policies, but we made a very, very strong suggestion that people wear masks, that they don't, we, we haven't had any activities or anything since the middle of March of last year. We don't allow gatherings. We removed chairs so not too many people could get around. And we're very fortunate that families and friends understood the seriousness of the situation. So, fortunately, they limited their times also.
Rebecca, can you tell the group who the commissioners are, the commission?
Oh, my. Ron Stalberg has been with the commission, I don't know how many years. I've been at the Waverly Homes in Manorford. I'm working on nineteen years, and Ron was there a long time before me. Kathy McClung is our secretary treasurer. She signs our checks and everything. Doug Bowman, Peggy Rothie, and Clark Wil- Wilharm. So, we have a very good group. They're all very much interested in doing the best for our residents and keeping things up to date and in good shape so that we can continue on. The Waverly Homes have been open for over fifty years, and so we want to keep it going.
Rebecca, I just want to compliment you on your website. I, I was looking at the website today with a patient, and it was very easy to navigate. The pictures and the floor plans were great. So, I just want to compliment you on that. I think it's a nice informational and marketing tool.
We had been trying to get that done for a long time, and I have to, kudos to my coworker Karen Schneider. She pulled it all together and we got it up and going, and we have had a good response. People, we can send people to the website. They can look at the pictures, get an idea of what we are, and then they can contact us. So, thank you.
Anything further from anyone else? Hearing none. I thank you once again, Rebecca, for your report to us, and anytime you have anything of importance you'd like to come back to the council with, just let us know and we'll get you on an agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to item number two is the review of the Historic Preservation twenty twenty Certified Local Government Annual Report. Mr. Isaac Pezly with us this evening to give us that update.
All right. I'm gonna share my screen with you, everyone here. So, every year, we do do an annual report that we send to the state. Basically, it's just to keep the Historic Preservation Commission in compliance with certified local government agreement. A lot of it's just informational. Who are the commission members? How many times a year do you meet? Do you have a website? Those types of questions. We didn't, uh, welcome two new members to the commission this year, Darius Robinson and Justin Jeffcoat Shetler. We also had Mary Ventuoh. She was with us for just a couple of months before she unfortunately had to resign. So, just going through, we're pretty quickly hitting the highlights. We did give out a couple of awards this year. One to Crosspoint Church, the former Waverly High School or the old Waverly Junior High Building. We gave them and added them to the historic, the Waverly Historic District, or excuse me, the Waverly Historic Register. That's not the national. It's just a local register. And then we also awarded the Cullen Clark House. We'll go down here. Four fifteen Fourth Avenue Southwest, Scott and Linda Cullen Clark. We gave them a Historic Preservation Award for their exterior renovation of E. William Waremacher House. So, Historic Preservation Commission, again, just kind of hitting the highlights here. We did complete a windshield survey done by Rebecca McCarley early last year, about January. We accepted that. And that was just helping to identify a couple of different potential historic districts located in northeast Waverly. We worked on the work plan that we submitted with last year's annual report. We've been working on with a couple of different, the Streetscape and Downtown Design Committee with some historic signage. We've been working on preservation and memorialization of the historic Green Bridge. Then the walking tours. This was something with covid hitting, we had a couple of different activities planned for Preservation Month, which is in May. Obviously, with covid, all of those in-person events were canceled. But one of the things that the commission was able to do was they created a commercial advertising, their walking tour brochures, and encouraged people to get out with those brochures and really go through the historic districts. And then, again, the particular issues, challenges, covid obviously being the big one, not being able to do the historic preservation activities. They had a couple of different things, a quorum they were going to, or excuse me, a historic preservation forum. They were gonna do celebration of the Farmers Exchange Building. Obviously, due to covid, we weren't able to do any of those events in person. But the commission was still able to be pretty active throughout the year. Again, awarding a couple of different awards, working on some different stuff. But we should be moving into twenty twenty-one. They've been working on some table tents to put in restaurants, just highlighting different historical districts, places throughout the town, just increasing the historic knowledge of the community. So, any questions?
Isaac, I just have a question about that historic district in northeast, the section of town. What's the status of that following that window survey?
Yeah, so we have identified, I believe that there's, we could do just one large district, or it could be split up into multiple. At this point, it's on hold because there's not the funding. Right now, the commission's just researching different ways. They could come up with funding to make that district.
I'd just like to thank Isaac for the good work you did putting this report together. I know it, a lot of work. As the liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission, I got to see it firsthand, so I'm gonna ensure the joy with everyone else, letting everyone know how much hard work you did putting this report together.
Anything further from anyone? I agree with that statement from Brian. Thank you very much for working on that report. I know there's a lot of time and energy and resource looking up and that kind of stuff that goes into it, so. Any other questions? All right. Move on to item number three, discussion of downtown parking. Kick this over to Mr. Browner.
Uh, yes, sir. This was requested by a couple of council for us to look into the possibility of establishing some kind of permitting program for downtown parking. It started from a request from a resident who had received the ticket, who lives in downtown. They had provided a sample from another city, I believe it was in Tamwa. And I guess we're just looking for a discussion of what council is looking for. I have Chief Purcell on as well to kind of outline the tickets when they usually arise. I, I guess I don't see it personally. I understand the need in downtown parking, but I think we're extremely lenient and flexible in our downtown parking. The reason most of the people that have been complaining got tickets is because they let their cars sit in the snow for a week and never moved them. And even the permit that was provided, the sample, if you look at the last section, it says in a snow event, you have twenty-four hours to move your vehicle, or else, that's exactly what we do now without permitting. So, I, I guess it doesn't really solve the solution or the problem with what's happened for, I'm kind of thinking, everybody who has gotten a ticket, it was due to the snow events and not moving their vehicles out of the way so public works could plow the lots. Because I guarantee you, we're gonna have a lot more complaints and issues if we don't plow the lots than if we ticket somebody to move their car so we can. So, a lot of these lots are twenty-four to forty-hour lots, and people park there for weeks on end, and they will receive a ticket when it snows, but that's the primary reason. I'll defer to Chief Purcell, but I don't believe we have officers walking through the parking lots, chalking tires, hoping to find somebody sitting there a day or two later. I think we have other things to do than that, but that was the premise of why we have us on tonight. That was a discussion at hand. Uh, that's my probably three cents worth, I guess, but I'll let council have the discussion or ask any questions pertaining to it.
So, where are they, are they complaining about a ticket like on Bremer Avenue, or is it like one of the parking lots like to the side or behind the buildings?
City parking lots, just the city-owned parking lots, whether it is the lot by Fidelity Bank was one of them or parking lots behind the businesses in town or the main lots. Again, they receive tickets when we can't get them and move them in the snowbanks they're sitting in so we can plow the lots out. Otherwise, every snow event we get, it's worse and worse and worse, and other people can't park there either. And believe it or not, we do get complaints from the retailers that don't like having people parking all the time in the parking lots behind their businesses because it takes away from their customers, and we do hear about that as well and have many times over the And we do hear about that as well and have many times over the years. So it is kind of a trade-off. What do you do with it? But as I stated, the primary reason people get tickets in these lots is because they don't move their vehicles in the snow, which is kind of the biggest reason that, you know, we have this.
So James, just to clarify, people have twenty-four hours after a snow event to move their car before they'll get ticketed? Or do you expect people to move like during the snow or before the event?
No, I think after it snowed, it's reasonable to have them move their vehicle to an area that's been plowed once. Get it out of the way so we can plow the rest of it. It is sometimes days and days after a snowstorm that we will get to every single lot. And we give them some kind of grace time, but if they won't move it for a certain amount of time, you're gonna get a ticket and you should. These are twenty-four hour lots you're applying for and sitting in for weeks on end and not getting a ticket. And then the one time it snows, you don't. And then we get the complaints for a ten dollar ticket because you sat there for a week and then you have a pile of snow three feet around your car. I don't know what they think's gonna happen or not gonna happen about guarantee. Almost every complaint we've had is from somebody that didn't move their car after a snowstorm and it sat there and sat there. And eventually the guys gotta get these plowed out. I don't know if you have comment, Rich? I mean, is that kind of a summary of where we're kind of sitting on this?
Yeah, you summarized it well. To Anne's question, the only place that we require vehicles to move during the snow event is on snow routes. Otherwise, it's forty-eight hours on public roadways and twenty-four hours timeframe within the city lots.
I actually had a comment that I was gonna say for council comments regarding snow event. I want to be careful here because this isn't on the agenda, but it really ties in nicely here. Who is, could, James or anybody, could we do something with policy to make it better for snow removal or easier for snow removal? And again, I gotta be mindful of the rules here. I know I can't, I'm trying to stay on the downtown parking, so.
Well, the snow removal of where? I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, because I'm trying to stay on the, on the topic, on the agenda. But I mean, is, is, if we just talk about downtown parking, can we help the snow removal by changing policy? I mean, it sounds like here we're gonna hurt, hurt, you know, we're trying to move the cars so we can move the snow.
Else you clear the lot if people don't get out of the way. Otherwise, we create huge mounds of snow and when they do move, nobody else can really park and pull into those.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, we've got some fairly heavy arterial boulevards where plows have to go around all the time. And I just wonder if we shouldn't, in a future study session, pull a broader topic on that. And, and see, I don't know if there's, if there's anything we can do, but boy, which are like, I know driving those plow trucks, that's not easy and every obstacle we put in them slows things down. And, and it's a hazard too. It's one more hazard we're putting in there. And it's a mess after they go through. So just be good to clean it up and have policy that's, that cleans up downtown, I guess is where I'm coming from back to the topic. So.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess we can talk about that some other point in time. I'm not really sure of the issue other than ticketing every car that doesn't get off the street. I mean, I suppose we can do that, but if you think we have issues in the parking lots, I guarantee we're gonna have a lot more issues ticketing cars that don't get off all the streets that we're plowing. It's, it's hard enough now to get them to move days after we've plowed to go back through and hit them again. But again, it certainly can talk about it. It's up to council to make that kind of a ruling. And I know staff and I will enforce it if need be, but absolutely at a later date if you choose to do so, we can talk about that. Right now with the lots, I guess I'm looking at councils to what they would kind of like to advise us to do. As I said, if you look at the sample that was provided for Tamwa, the last section addresses this particular issue. You have twenty-four hours after a snow event to move your vehicle. If that was happening now, then it wouldn't have any tickets in the first place. So without a policy or a permitting system, we already are doing that, so to speak, but without charging somebody to sit and park in a lot.
So we don't have an official policy saying, okay, you need to move your car within twenty-four hours? We're just saying it? Or is there actually written somewhere that, hey, after snow, you have to do this? Because that would be the policy, right?
The, the code states that you have to move your vehicle every twenty-four hours in the city lot. So it's not tied to a snow event. You can only park for periods of twenty-four hours. We just get it recognized more often when it snows. They're easier to tell. As James pointed out in the first part of his presentation is that the officers aren't marking tires and walking through there looking for those violations. Most of our parking tickets always come from complaint-driven basis.
Well, I, I believe even parking on city streets, you're required to move your car every forty-eight hours. But again, there's no one chalking tires. There's no one checking the tape or the film unless there's snow, unless there's an easy way to tell if a car hasn't moved. Now, I, I will say what I notice on the city streets is that you will have someone who will have their car parked. The plows will go around them, so there's a pile of snow there. The person will move their car around the block, come back and park somewhere in the vicinity of the snow pile. So those snow piles tend to accumulate over time. So even though they're moving it, you still have the problems of accumulated snow. I don't have a solution for that either. I think it's the same as the problem on the lot. If you have people who are just creating hazards for our plow drivers, I, I don't have a lot of sympathy for them because I think the plow drivers are doing a huge service to the community. I suppose unless we hear back from the, those apartment dwellers, those people living in downtown apartments, where they're having problems with tickets other than snow events, I would be satisfied just letting this drop. And I think this was inspired by someone who was complaining about, you know, getting ticketed for not moving. Apparently, we did not have the full story that this was simply in the case of snow events. Now, if they come back to us and give us more information about examples where it wasn't a snow event that they got ticketed, I think we can pick this up again. But unless we know that this is something other than just snow-related tickets, I'm happy to let it drop.
I think snow events are the primary reason. Now, there are times when we will get public complaints and that's the other side of it. But primarily, those are the, usually the items that'll cause us to go out, look for that vehicle, provide a ticket, chalk a tire. Again, the, the officers have more important things to do than run around chalking tires in parking lots. I mean, it's the truth of it. And unfortunately, yeah, people will park there for quite a bit longer than they're technically supposed to, but we're gonna need twice the force to go around and force this to death if that's what we want to do. Same with the parking in the snow and everything else. I think they do a great job with the manpower we have. Is it a huge issue? I don't know if it is or not. I think it's definitely worth talking about. But as I stated, even the permitting we found, and Tamwa was one of them, there's a few others I found, there still is a snow permit rule in there. You gotta move it in twenty-four hours. So it doesn't solve the problem of, as I said, majority, if not all, the tickets that we've received and that complaint's on so far, they were driven by snow events. If there's one that wasn't, then I'd want to hear the entire story of what did happen. But I gotta assume that's primarily when it does happen, when the guys gotta get in and plow the lots to let the police know, hey, it's been three days since it last snowed. Can we hit the people that haven't moved yet so we can get these lots cleaned up? Because another snow is coming. And that's the last time we had a large series of tickets. We had a snowstorm. It sat there for weeks. A lot of these people, we needed to get it cleared. Another one was coming. A lot of tickets went out. So that, that's where I sit with it, I guess.
Look, I've, I've got some issues here. First is, I'm a little confused, is are the, the lots, are they twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours? Because a copy of the, and I don't know if this is city code, because I didn't print off a city code and I probably should have, but the person sent along a copy of the city code with their email and that seems to indicate that the time limit for parking in city parking lots is forty-eight hours?
Twenty-four hours in city lots, forty-eight out on the public roadways.
Okay, and is that posted somewhere on the, the parking lots?
It is, Rod. It's at every entrance to every city lot.
All right. So what, basically what we're doing is we're saying that we're just going to look the other way and not give people tickets if they're parking more than twenty-four hours unless there's a snow event. That doesn't seem like the proper way to go about this to me. We're telling people, go ahead and break the law and we'll just wink at you. And there's no, really no certainty whether you'll get a ticket or not get a ticket because, you know, maybe we'll enforce it, maybe we won't, but, you know, we'll worry about it when the time comes. That, that just doesn't seem like a good solution to me. If we're going to encourage people to live downtown in these apartments, and that's one of the things that we wanted to do, was have more livable space in the downtown area and then have uncertainty on where they can park their cars and how long they can park it and how quickly they need to get their cars out of the way if there's a snow event. You know, then I think there's an issue. If we actually had some kind of permitting program and that said, hey, we're gonna give you a parking permit and you can park here as long as your car is not a junk car, is movable. You can park here permanently in this lot, but you have to move it within twelve hours or twenty-four hours of a snow event. That, I think, gives some certainty to these people that are living here that they're not gonna get a ticket by parking illegally in a parking lot because they're permitted to park there. And it reinforces the, the point that if they are parking there for a longer term and there's a snow event, they need to get their car out of there within a certain time period or they will get a ticket. So to me, it's an issue of just making sure that people understand what their rights are and what their responsibilities are rather than just doing this on the wing.
I guess the indifference that you just identified would have been somebody else's verbiage and not mine or the police department's. We do track it. We do watch it. We don't wink and nod at them. And, but as James pointed out, we can't always get in there and mark every single day to follow and track that. And, and I don't know what else to do, notification to people that live there other than have a sign that they pass every single time they enter and exit the parking lot that states you gotta move every twenty-four hours. Because there are folks, Public Works, the snow event is just the easiest indicator. But we get calls also from Public Works when they're trying to get in and do street cleaning, for example, repainting, for another example, to get those vehicles moved. And, and if we don't, if we don't remove those vehicles and, and let them cycle out, congestion becomes an issue. And, and we have had issues of abandoned vehicles there and we, and we address those. I just, I just want to make sure that we don't have the misinterpretation that we only enforce this during snow events. That is the easiest time.
And, and, and that's, I guess, my point is, if we don't have a policy that provides some certainty to the people that are living there, where they can park and how long they can park, we're really providing a discouragement for people to live downtown. I understand your concerns there, Chief, that we need to move these cars out at various times. And maybe we can, maybe there's some kind of a notification system because if they have a permit, they obviously have to have a telephone number, an email address, and they need to be contacted and said, okay, you have to have your car out of these lots between this date and this date or you'll receive a ticket. But just enforcing this on kind of an ad hoc basis just doesn't, to me, it doesn't provide any certainty for those people living downtown, what they can do and what they can't do.
I, I'm gonna vouch for the police officers not just random, you know, just only taking care of this, nodding and winking. They don't do that. I live in front of the high school and there, there is a two-hour parking limit in, right in front of my house. My mom has been ticketed. My boys have been ticketed. But they live right there and it's basically because they maybe didn't have to get up and go to work until nine o'clock or something like that. And they're, they noticed that those cars were sitting there, so, for more than than two hours. So my mom, again, she's been ticketed because she doesn't like to go in my driveway. She'd rather park in the street because it's easier for her to get out. And sometimes she comes so early in the morning and then when school comes by, they notice it's still been in there. Well, she, she gets ticketed like ten minutes before she takes my daughter to school. So, so they're not just nodding and winking. They are doing that. But I see where, you know, James said, hey, it's just not, we, they're just not doing that. They're not, that's not the main focus of their job and they can't keep track of that all the time, you know? I mean, you know, a car sitting in a parking lot, maybe they live there and they come home the same time a day all the time and maybe it looks like they're sitting there all the time. But, you know, unless you go around chalking tires every single day, which I don't think the police officers should do, should have to do, you're really not gonna know. And I, to me, the sign along the street tells me and is enough for me to know that I only can park in front of my house for two hours during school. I have to park. That sign enough is enough for me. I know that sign. I don't have to look at it every day. I noticed it when I moved in and said, oh, they do enforce that about two months after I moved in. So the sign for me is enough. Sure, I wouldn't mind having a, a permit so I can actually park in front of my, I live here. That would be great. And then I wouldn't have to worry about moving my car and I would only move it, you know, when I needed to or not worry about only being there, for being there for longer for two hours. That would be awesome. But really, the sign is enough to let me know that's, that is the policy for the street. So.
And Heather, on a previous council, that actually was discussed because there was residences that were upset that they can't park in front of their own house. And there, there was a request for permitting along Fourth Avenue in front of the high school as well. And, and it just got convoluted to, well, these folks can park here, these folks can't. So it just went away. We are on about, in my time here, I think this is version three of downtown city parking lots. And, and we continue to try to adjust it to accommodate folks. And so we'll enforce whatever council ends up deciding.
Well, I, I, I think that the issue is here, and I, I, I think that Heather makes my point. It's not an issue of whether the, the police are enforcing it or not enforcing it. I think that's the moot point. The, the, the point is, is that people can only park legally in the downtown lots for twenty-four hours. If they park more than twenty-four hours, they're violating city code and they're, they're liable to get a ticket, whether they get one or not. I, I think that's a discussion for another time. The issue that we have to address is, is that acceptable to us as a city council to tell people who live in the downtown part of Waverly, if you park in a city lot for more than twenty hours, twenty-four hours, you're getting, you're parking there illegally. We don't want you to park in a city parking lot. So where are they gonna park their cars? You know, I, I guess what we're saying is, well, you gotta go out every day and move your car someplace into a different lot and, and then you'll be satisfying the law. Is that really encouraging people to park downtown? Is that the policy you want to set, is that we do not want people who are living downtown to park for long-term in a city parking lot? And I, I think that is sending the wrong message, that we want people to live downtown. We want them to be able to have their vehicles parked fairly close to where they live. Where else are they gonna park it? On a city street, they got forty-eight hours if they park it in front of somebody else's house on a city street. I don't think that's acceptable either. So to me, it makes some sense to say, hey, our policy as a council, as a city of Waverly, is that we want to encourage people to live in downtown Waverly. And if we want you to live in downtown Waverly, there needs to be a place for you to leave your car and to leave your car for more than twenty-four hours. Whether the, whether the police enforce that twenty-four-hour parking or not, it's still, if they're there for more than twenty-four hours, they're violating city code. So do we want them to park downtown? Do we want to invite them to live in downtown Waverly or don't we? And to me, it makes sense to have some kind of a parking policy that says if you're living in downtown Waverly, we want you to have a place where you can legally have your car for more than twenty-four hours.
How many of the current residences that are along Bremer Avenue downtown have designated parking spots in a lot somewhere near their apartment?
The only ones I do right now are from the original Big Six and that was part of the agreement when they redid that. Because there is no parking immediately behind their residence. So that's why they provided this some space on the other side where everybody else has a city lot behind them.
Okay, so the people who have designated spots from the Big Six, do they also have to move their cars every forty, every twenty-four hours or not if they have a designated parking spot?
Yes, they do not have to move if they're within their designated spot.
Okay. And if we, if we allowed a parking spot per apartment along Bremer Avenue? Okay, and if we, if we allowed a parking spot per apartment along Gremer Avenue, does anybody know how many spots that would take up? If we had reserved parking, one per apartment, let's say? Cause the, the new Kuna, the historic lofts, they have a lot. Correct, so they, they should have enough parking spots where they wouldn't get ticketed. So how many, do we have any clue how many apartments? And then therefore, how many parking spots we would need downtown?
We've never matched them up, but we haven't had any issues since we especially added the parking lot by the, um, Waverly Lofts. Um, there was some discussion about that and the number of apartments that we've been adding. But we always seem to have enough spaces for everybody to park their car and just, right?
And and I didn't receive the original email or letter or complaint from the resident. The context was this person lives downtown and got a ticket for not moving their car within 24 hours or because of snow or what was the situation?
Uh, they didn't indicate snow, they said it was a ticket for not moving within the allocated time.
Oh. So could you forward that maybe to those of us who didn't get it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
I just had a, a couple, uh, comments. I had actually reached out to a former tenant of the apartments, I think it's the same ones where the concern was addressed from. Um, but the parking lot right behind Water Street there. Um, talked to a former tenant there. And I said, you know, when you rented that apartment and knew that you were gonna park in that parking lot, uh, when you signed your, your lease agreement, uh, and when you looked at the apartment, was there any discussion? And this individual said, yeah, the landlord disclosed and they, they rented in the middle of summertime. The landlord disclosed that, hey, you know, parking back there 48 hours, this is the lot, this is where you have to park. Um, city comes and cleans it, but you can, during those snow events, you have to move your vehicle to a cloud spot so that it is cleared. So I, I think the education is there from at least one landlord and that would kind of be the expectation for all of the landlords. To, you know, disclose that, no differently than when I, when my wife and I were looking at houses and we purchased our house on Third Avenue Northwest. It's on the, uh, snow route. And we know that, okay, during the summer months, you can park out there for up to 48 hours. But when there's a snow event, you better have it out of the way. Um, so there are people that live on Third Avenue, for instance, that don't have around the corner parking like I did, which was not on a snow route. And I would park my car over there during snow routes, uh, or or snow events. And one time I didn't get it moved and they'd gone around me and the time had passed and I got a citation. Um, so I, I've even, you know, succumbed to, you know, the rules as well, um, out of complacency. But the downtown parking i- is similar in that, that I think it comes down to a lot of education from the, the landlords. It's easy for the landlords to not think about it during the summertime when you might be leasing to a college student or something. But I think to Rod's point, this situ- or to the point altogether, this situation is gonna, um, expand once the theater is done and now we've got, you know, we're hearing 12 units. That's 12 more units of parking that we've got to accommodate somewhere. Um, so probably off-street parking lot, you know, parking. Um, I had another person, uh, reach out to me, uh, one-on-one and said, you know, there's oftentimes in the parking lot behind, um, well, it's right next to the old Mauer where, um, the, uh, yoga studio is now, uh, that there's oftentimes a trailer that's parked there quite frequently for more than 24 hours. Um, it, or or more than 48 hours during the summertime and it's, I believe it's gone now. But they raised a question that, okay, if somebody lives in one of the apartments and they have a, a small trailer, are they able to park their trailer in the parking lot similar to the way that this other trailer is parked in the same manner and not receive a ticket for it? Um, unless they move it every 48 hours. So tho- those are just the three points that I wanted to, to bring forward. If, uh, Rich or anybody wants to respond to those concerns or anything. Any other comments? Ann, I see you took your mute off.
No, I was just thinking, you know, I think it's not unusual in cities that people have to move their cars. Um, it's, it, it is unusual that people get free parking in downtown area. It's nice that we have free parking, whether it's for shoppers or for people who, who live down there. So, you know, I think it, especially if we do expand downtown living, it's something we have to figure out is do we have enough spots to accommodate everyone? Uh, it sounds like most of the actual tickets that are given are for vehicles that are there so long that, you know, people start to notice when the snow piles up. And I imagine you have to make a house call to let the person know, come move your car because it's not like you can put a ticket on there. If they haven't noticed the car's covered with snow for six days, they're not gonna find their ticket in the melting snow pile, so, um, you know, I think it's a conundrum, but I, I, again, I haven't seen the email, so I don't know how long that person's car had been sitting there when it got ticketed. But it, it doesn't sound like the police officers are out. You know, this is not their primary issue, which I agree it should not be. Um, unless the car's been abandoned and it's in the way of, of snow removal, but.
We do have a lot of space and it's kind of an interesting problem to have. Uh, it's a good problem to have, there's plenty of, of room to park. And I am glad we stayed away from, there's a lot of the development that's, um, gone along that actually limits how many, um, vehicles you can park. I don't know why they would do that. I, I, I guess they think that we're not gonna have cars in the future, but that's really gonna, um, really gonna suppress how, how well that, that, uh, real estate can, uh, can be rented. So I'm glad we've stayed away from that, but, um, but yeah, there's, there's plenty of room to move our cars around.
Uh, my big concern-
A carbon building at the Big Six. So we've said that those, um, designated parking spaces, they don't have to be moved every 48 hours. Do they have to move in the case of a snow event? So if there's a snow event and they've got their reserve parking and they're still required to move their cars? So they're not, okay.
You know, it's, uh, I find it interesting that, uh, um, you would be, I think you'd be amazed the number of complaints that we get over parking. Um, you know, I, I joke with James and other folks, I can arrest somebody, put him in jail and I, I don't hear a peep. You give somebody a $10 parking ticket and, I mean, look, I mean, it is amazing. And, uh, and so when we, when we, if we're gonna have a larger discussion, we need to talk about beyond the residences too because, um, we had a, one of the reasons we made a change is, uh, to 24 hours was it used to be overnight parking, overnight parking. Um, then we got an issue because somebody made the right decision, left their car there in the parking lot because they were at a local business and they were intoxicated. And they felt that by giving tickets, we were promoting drinking and driving. And so, so there's a, there's a lot of reasons why we are where we're at today with this version that we have. We've, we've made some, several adjustments. So it, it probably is a bigger discussion, but, um, I don't know if we got Ann's answer about the number of number of spots that you would need, um, to accommodate at least one parking for every single upper story resident.
Well, I would just make the observation that if we instituted some kind of a parking permit policy, those parking permits wouldn't be free. And we would have to charge money to cover the administration costs, um, of, you know, passing out the, the stickers and, you know, putting the permit on your car and keeping track of, of whose, uh, license plate number that is. It probably costs more than the ticket. Um, I, I can't imagine that we're actually, you know, putting in some kind of a parking permit policy in place would save anybody any money other than, you know, the indignity of getting a $10 ticket. Um, so, so I, 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 I hate to use the phrase big government, but I think this is one of those cases where we don't need more administration to try to, you know, fix this problem.
And I would agree with Rich. Um, we're just scratching the surface of this. We've talked about the Big Six, I can't tell you how many complaints I get, the fact there are limited parking by those businesses there. The retailers are not happy at all that that sits back there. When there is a summer and events go on, there's empty spots sitting there, but you don't dare park in them because they're reserved. It's not fun for that either, we get quite a handful of those in the summer. And you will hear that from other retailers if you start taking up their front row spots right behind their restaurant, their shop, shops and businesses. That's kind of the argument we get off and on and it, it's just simply not a cut and dry situation, cause I agree with Brian. There's a lot of people that aren't getting tickets or they pay their $10 ticket once a year. You start charging them $30 a quarter, whatever it might be now, $120 to pay for that same spot that they weren't paying for before, you're gonna hear about that too. Um, and then you gotta track it, what if they have people coming to visit? I wish it was simpler, I really do, but I agree with Rich, parking has been a tough thing for as long as I've been here, whether it's a high school, the hospital, the Warburg, there's all kinds of areas that are congested. People don't like it. We've actually put no parking on part of the streets. Had so many complaints, we took it back and let it park in the streets again. It just, it's been done multiple ways, multiple times and it's never gonna be right. You're just gonna have to weigh out what's the least complaint you're gonna get and that's a hard one to dis- uh, discern yourself with until you do it. So we're open to whatever council would like to do, but I'm gonna tell you, it won't fix it. It'll just fix part of it. And then it'll cause an issue somewhere else, you'll hear about it then. It's just a never-ending ripple effect and that's kind of what we've seen so far.
They're trying to stretch their hand on the corners of the room.
I was gonna say, a lot of it would be solved if people would walk two blocks, you know? Park two blocks away and walk, right? Because a lot of times you'll see one parking spot where people are dry or one lot, like the one you mentioned where the Big Six spots are, that is full, um, when across the street, the Civic Center parking lot is empty. Right, and people could park there if they're going out to eat or wherever. And so if people would walk a little farther, um, some of this would be remedied. And and you're right, you're never gonna solve this because you can't make everybody happy. And so I think it has to be safety, right? And convenience for Public Works, uh, staff and aesthetics. You know, abandoned cars are not a good look for any community or neighborhood. Um, you know, but you're not, you're not gonna please everybody and, and you know, like Heather said, she can't park for more than two hours in front of her house and she's learned to adapt, right? And so, and occasionally you get a ticket because you forget and I don't know, I mean, I think it'd be nice if we could set aside parking for each development downtown, but we might not have enough room. Um, it's a bit landlocked and so people might need to move their cars every one, two days.
So, um, I'm just kind of thinking of like, of Cedar Falls. Um, and some of them are metered and some of the parking lots aren't. So it's just kind of like the closer spots maybe are metered on the side streets. Um, the farther spots are not. Uh, so it encourages people to park farther away and walk, um, cause they don't wanna pay that meter. But then nothing, right, um, like on Main Street is metered, I don't think. Um, you can, you can freely park there. Um, people come and go from the, that Main Street all the time, but then as you get to the side streets, some of it is metered, um, or at least it has been, I haven't been downtown for a while, but, um, but you know, those side streets, having those metered, um, maybe would encourage people to park further away. I don't know, I like James said, whatever you do, somebody's gonna complain. So, um, you're gonna be, I don't know.
The thing is, we're fortunate, we have so much space as Ann said, we can just park away, we can walk two blocks. And it's such a wonderful thing that we don't have to have, you know, the big parking lobby doing, uh, you know, as Brian says, this is kind of big government, I don't think we need it. We can just park and walk and, uh, you know, whatever we do, no one will be happy. So I, I say we move on to item four on the agenda.
I would tell you, if you let your meter run out, Cedar Falls or Waterloo, I would pray it was only a $10 ticket firsthand experience. It's a lot more than $10 and that's just the way it is.
Yeah. All right, I think we'll-
You know, in, in big cities, they put a boot on your car. You know, they tow your car if you don't move your car.
And people don't, and people don't like shopping in those areas. They avoid those because of that stuff and the more, um, we just need to be friendly. We need to, uh, as, as the mayor said, you know, that, uh, that, that Midwest understanding when these tenants sign up, we need so much more of that. The more of that, we can get, the less of the signs and the nonsense, the parking Nazis, I'm, I'd be all for that.
All right, I think we'll press on with the agenda here. Uh, if there's need to bring this forward, uh, further, um, build a consensus through reaching out to city clerk or city administrator. And they'll handle it from there if we get a consensus that brings it, uh, back to the table, so. Thank you all and, uh, thank you Chief Purcell for your, uh, participation and insight as well. Um, item G is, uh, reports from boards and commissions. Item one is the Economic Development Commission minutes of December 8th of 2020. Item two is-
Are we gonna talk about item four?
Oh.
F four?
Oh, sorry. I had already turned the page, I wrote my notes on the wrong page. Thank you, Brian, for interrupting there. I appreciate it. Item four is discussion of special elections or special election and appointment or versus appointment for the upcoming Ward Two vacancy.
I don't know if, I, I think I'm the only one on the council that has been on when we've filled a vacancy. Um, and I've, we've filled a couple since I've been on. Uh, one of them happened to be when Rod, uh, volunteered to fill a position, um, a number of years ago, probably almost 10 years ago now. Um, and I believe Iowa law gives us the ability as a council to appoint a council member, uh, to, to fill a vacancy until the next available election. My position that I've kind of been, um, I kind of, that's just seems like an, a little bit too much power for the council to pick our own, uh, colleagues. Um, I would much rather leave it open to the citizens of the ward. Now, if there's only one person that's expressing an interest, I would certainly have no problem then appointing that single person. But if there's more than one that are, is expressing an interest, I don't really feel that it's our place to, uh, kind of pick and choose, uh, who that would be, um, which would kind of leads me back to when Rod, uh, applied or, or volunteered to, to take, fill the position. Previously, there was one of two and, and I was, I cast a no vote on Rod being appointed at that time. Uh, but that was my rationale behind it. I didn't think that we should be appointing, um, a council member. I thought it should go to an open now. They had a, a gentleman's agreement that, um, they would do a coin flip between the two of, uh, the two interested parties and the winner would, uh, or the loser would graciously bow out and, and allow the winner to be the sole applicant essentially. Um, but I guess that's my feeling and I know there's people talking about, well, it's, it costs extra money to have a special election or something along that. But at the same time, um, what price democracy? It's the same thing, um, when we talk about, you know, the, the idea of, of ranked choice ballots. Uh, I have a lot of reservations about that because I don't find that is as as democratic, that it's, it's, doesn't leave, um, the people having the choice. It's, it comes down to a little bit more oddities taking place.
So could somebody maybe Bill review for us? What does Iowa law say and what does city code say about what our options are in this situation?
Well, the, uh, the ordinance says you either, uh, elect, or you select a new person, you vote on that, or you have a special election. And the special election, uh, so you can actually say we're gonna do a special election and that, that goes forward that way. Or people can, um, actually ask for it by, uh, submitting a petition.
And how much does it cost to run a special election if you just do it for that ward?
Well, Carla, do you have an idea or?
Yeah, I actually checked into all of this and it's, you know, Shelley Wolf told me that it'd be about $2,000 for a special election. And then if there was a runoff, it would be another 2,000. And that is, um, that much amount because it's just the one ward that they have to poll, have a polling place for and may have the labor or manpower for.
I, I think that if I'm reading the, um, Iowa code correctly, I don't believe that there would be a runoff election in a, uh, in a special election. And I might be wrong about that.
in a, in a special election. And I might be wrong about that, but I, I, I basically want to second what Tim said. I, I think that it's important that we have the, the people make a choice on this rather than just the six remaining council members. You know, this is their council representative, not our council representative. And I understand the sentiment about not spending the money on a special election. But I think it's really important that the people in that ward make their own decisions on that. I, and I can say from personal experience with having the council make a decision that it really was a bit of a disaster. I, I would not really wish that on, on anyone else. So if there are only one person who expressed an interest in that council position, yeah, then we'll, you know, we'll do the council vote and be done with it. But I suspect that that's not going to be the situation here, that there's going to be more than one. And I would certainly think that we would want to leave that up to the citizens of that ward to make that decision. And I also think as far as, as ranked voting, I think it has some intriguing possibilities. But, but right now, I don't know. I'm sure you're aware, it's no secret that there are groups that have been actively working to undermine confidence in our voting system. So having a change in the way that we conducted elections right now would not be something I think we want to try. I don't think this is the time to try anything new. So my preference would be that we go ahead and hold a special election in, in the same manner that we've always done our elections. You know, we have our candidates. Whoever gets the most votes wins.
Just a side note, we have looked into the whole ranked voting issue, et cetera. It's just not permitted in the state of Iowa. So you couldn't do it if you chose to anyway. It's just simply not permitted.
I think what we've done in the past for filling a vacancy is we've taken, had a kind of a set date for people to express their interests to the council. And then if there were more, then if there were more than one, at that point, the council made a decision to either have the special election or to appoint. Because I think, I mean, our code, code says that we have the ability to appoint or call for a special election. And I think what we've done in the past, so we've kind of put out and said, by this date, express your interest in running for this position and we'll take, you know, it's, it's not, I don't believe Carla can remind, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe they have to do any nomination by, by petition for that point. It's only when they get the special election part that they have to do the actual, get the nomination papers.
No, you're correct, Tim. However, the clerk's office does have to run that in the newspaper to ask for interest basically in that ward seat.
A few things that have.
I seem to recall that in Ward One, when Dan Lampe was elected, that was a case of someone stepping down. And there was a question if there was interest. I know it was myself, Dan Lampe and Matt Nolte, where three people expressed interest. And that was when they decided not to do an appointment, but to do an election. So that's kind of the, the last time that I remember. And, and I would agree that if there's more than one person expressing interest, there shouldn't be an election. If there's only one person, we can appoint them and be fine. But if there's multiple people interested, it definitely comes down to the people of that ward choosing their representative.
Couple of things that I'll point out that I had people reach out to me about is with the, the timeline of Mr. Glazer's departure, that would leave over half of the remaining term if there was an appointment. Additionally, just looking at the council arrangement that we have now, discounting Mr. Glazer wouldn't, you know, be part of that appointment vote. But the current council and even including myself, the, we only have one person that lives in that ward that would be, you know, voting essentially for their own ward. So that's, that was something that's also should be considered as well. That I would, if I was in a council position, I would feel uncomfortable voting for representation in a ward that I don't live in. So just putting that out and I did talk to Shelley the other evening after she had talked to Carla at the voting for the, the bond issue. And, and she'd gone over some of those things. So I guess, again, reach out to Carla with consensus on how we should proceed. Or, you know, do we want to wait for, you know, people to express interest? I do know that one person, the person that was a candidate the last time has, has made it known to me that they're interested. So there's at least one person that I know is, that is interested at this point in time. I had somebody reach out to me today and say, save the money and do an appointment of the person that was interested the last time. Things we've, will have had almost two years of, of involvement in the, in the, in the city with a lot of changes. So I, I think the, the feeling is mutual that we see what's out there and make a decision from there. But reach out to Carla, James, let them know what your feelings are. Any other comments?
If you don't mind, Your Honor, I just want to clarify. So if we, if the council appoints a person, they would not have more than half the term left. Because at that point, if appointed, it's mandatory that they be put on the ballot in November. Or somebody be put on the ballot. If their special election happens, then they would finish the term.
Right, correct. Yep, you are correct there.
What is our, what would be the deadline date for a Ward Two candidate potential? I thought I saw that, heard that somewhere, but I didn't lock it into my head.
So if we appoint, the appointment has to be done 60 days after Chris's last day. So May 31st is his last day. So 60 days after that, sometime in that time period. And I can email all this to you if you'd like. And then I have to run the newspaper article at least four, but not more than 20 days before the appointment is scheduled to occur. And then I have to also notify the auditor's office at least 32 days before the intended election date. And what she told me is that the first Tuesday of June would be an election date. And Chris has done May 31st, so therefore June 1st would be the election date or could be. It could also be after, but otherwise it's every first Tuesday of the month for this year. It changes during a general election year.
So what I gathered from that, from my conversation with Shelley, that, that was exactly the same thing. She said, you know, if you didn't want to have a seat vacant, you could, you know, kind of expedite this and have an election on June 1st. Or you could have the appointment ready to go with all your publications and stuff shortly thereafter, if you went that route.
So if we did a special election June 1st, Carla, what dates would you anticipate that you would do the advertising? And that people would, people would still need to collect names on a petition to get on the ballot, just like a regular election or not?
I wasn't really clear on that part of it, Anne. You do, I mean, like I said, I have to work it out in the calendar. I really didn't go that deep into it until I knew what you were going to do. But it would be 32 days before the election. So somewhere around the end of April, I think I actually did.
They would have to have their, like their declaration and their paperwork in by a month before?
No, that's when I have to notify the auditor that we are, that the council has chosen to do a special election.
Okay. And so then there's only that month that people would submit their paperwork and get their name on the ballot?
Right. And I, I mean, I don't know if it's the exact same paperwork. I think you'd still, actually I do know that. I'm sorry. It is. You have, they have to do the nomination papers. They need 13 signatures each from, from somebody in that, from an eligible voter in that ward too. So, yeah, it's basically what you guys all did.
It's a short campaign season.
Yeah.
Short campaign and short for early voting as well when it's, you know, the special election. So keep that in mind. I would, I would say it doesn't hurt right now for people. You can go out and get the nomination affidavit paperwork. If you're interested in running for that vacancy, it's not going to hurt you to get nomination papers and, and start doing it now. Anybody that's wanting to run for city council seats or this seat, you know, you can start collecting your signatures now for this fall. There, there's nothing stopping you from doing that. So even if you, the council decides to go forward with an appointment, your name would probably be in the hat if you're that interested to be considered, so.
Correct me, Carla, when you said that if we appoint, then it would be 60 days after Chris's last day that they would take office? Within. Or within, they have to within that 60 days?
So the appointment has to be made within that 60 days?
They have to appoint within that 60 days, but they could take office June 1st if we've made an appointment June 1st essentially. Since he's done May 31st.
Right. I don't, I mean, unless you had a special meeting, you wouldn't necessarily be able to appoint. But yes, ideally.
If we were to have the election June 1st, then it's probably that Friday after that it gets certified to have a formal that the, has to go through the canvassing or whatever to formalize it, be still probably that first or second meeting in June that we'd have somebody seated.
They could take the oath and stuff on, on the June 15th date or 16th, whichever it is.
21st.
I think it's, yeah, yeah. I'm, yeah.
I think I'd also like to point out here that if they do have to have nomination petitions filed, which, what'd you say, 13 people? So it shouldn't take a very long time, but I'm, I'm reading the requirements here and they have to be submitted not less than 47 days before the day to the election. So the election is on June 1st. That would mean they'd have to have their nomination petitions filed by about April 15th. Am I doing my math right? So anyone who's interested, you know, you, you have time, but you can't wait forever to get those petitions. So we really need to make a decision as, as a council here. And I, I think if I'm reading everybody here correctly, is we want to go forward with a special election and try to do it as, as, as soon as we possibly can, which would be June 1st. And that would put this whole timeline, start, start working it, so.
I, I agree with that. I would suggest that email consensus to Carla for an agenda item for the next meeting, if that's okay with you, Carla, James, Bill?
I guess I'm just confused as to what the agenda item would be for the next meeting.
Well, you have to have an agenda item to actually call for a special election.
Right.
Oh, right, sorry.
The auditor has to determine how many days they need to give for people to do their papers to get them filed so that they can have the election.
I would establish the calendar.
Press the time.
Yep.
Well, if they have to, would have to get papers in by mid-April. If we, next, next Monday, our first meeting basically authorized Carla to, or at least put it on the agenda to vote, whether we're authorizing Carla to, to advertise the position. We could then have the two weeks or whatever, the 15th or the 22nd even of, of March to have people submit interest, declaration of interest. And then if we, we would know if we have more than one to call for a special election, either the 15th or the 22nd at that point. Does that make sense time wise? Because then if we're calling a special election, that gives them the time to get applications or get the petitions, signatures.
My question is if we call for a selection and only one person actually turns in paperwork, do we have the ability to then cancel this election?
No.
No, I think you made the decision.
Yeah.
So we really need to kind of put out a call for interest so we'd know if we've got more than one person interested or not?
Yep.
So we can put this on.
Actually, that's what we should do then, is, is, I mean, my, I guess my opinion would be what was stated previously is that if, if you just have one person interested, there's not much point in having a special election. And so it sounds like we do have time to advertise it, give people a couple of weeks to state their intent. And then they would still have time to do their papers before a June 1st election if there were more than one candidate. Even if the person's appointed, they're going to have to run in November. So, you know, it's like, you know.
Kind of put this on the agenda and then also put out the call that if there's enough interest, they, if, if they were interested, they should tell someone on city council. And then if we have, you know, more than one person who's expressed interest, then we'll know how to vote. And if we've only had one person who's expressed interest, then we'll just vote the other way.
Right. And if anybody's concerned about that we're rushing how soon somebody has to make a decision, there still is, if we appoint, the ability of the citizens to then petition for a special election of their, on their own, that they could then override the city council decision to appoint and call for a special election on their own. If, if there's, you know, if we were to appoint somebody and people are like, oh, whoa, wait, I really wanted to run and now, now I didn't get the chance. And they could, they could, could, if they could gather enough signatures, basically override that decision.
I guess, I'm sorry. I guess too, with a special election, it does offer the opportunity for somebody to be written in and win with a write-in. Just a thought.
And that has happened. All right. Do we know how to proceed, Carla? Are you good?
It sounds like I am to go ahead and run the call for interest in the newspaper.
Yes.
And then we will see how that goes.
Correct. Thank you. Anything further before moving forward? All right. Let's try item G once again. Reports from boards and commissions. Item number one is the Economic Development Commission minutes of December 8th, 2020. Item two is the Plaid and zoning commission minutes of January 7th of 2021. Item three is the golf commission minutes of January 12th of 2021. And item four is the airport commission minutes of January 14th of 2021, all received into record. Item H is staff updates. Mr. Browner.
Hey, do you think we have a brief update from Garrett, the C?
Excellent.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I've got a couple of helpers here with me tonight to announce that the Waverly Area Partnership for Healthy Living, otherwise known as Waffle, has won $5,000 again this year. If you remember, we won it last year as well. It's the Healthy Hometown powered by Wellmark. Last year, we used that $5,000 towards the downtown mural. The Waffle Group will be meeting later this week and then in the coming months to decide where that $5,000 award is going this year. Some of the things included on the grant application included the Cedar River Parkway Trail Extension, completion of Streetscape, enhancements to the disc golf course, the Prairie Park Neighborhood, collaboration for the pickleball court, basketball court and the shelter, the community gardens, Day of Caring and the Go Hawk Hustle. So this is the second year, like I said, that we have won the award. There were two other winners of the award as well. That was Cass County and then Waterloo. So yeah, we're pretty excited about that. Can't wait to discuss with the Waffle Group as to where this money will go. So, thank you. So thank you.
Garrett, are you going to introduce your, your, your models?
My, my models are two of my friends, Brenley and Bryson. So thank you guys.
Yes, thank you very much for helping out. Just an evening full of celebratory and appreciation for everything that's going on between wrestling and leisure services and the, the groups in our community. So excellent. Thank you, sir. Anything further, Mr. Browner?
Uh, no, sir. I believe it's it.
All right. Thank you. City Council comments. We'll move forward with Mr. Bergen.
So I have to announce that I have joined the fraternity of dog owners in Waverly. My family has adopted a four-year-old hound terrier mix from the Cedar Bend or Cedar Valley Humane Society. And I have to say, I have really come to appreciate all of the trails, all of those good citizens who shovel their sidewalk. And a, a special shout out to Leisure Services and the dog park. The dog park is a wonderful place to take the dog to run around, even in cold weather, especially in cold weather apparently. So I wanted to thank Waverly for being so welcoming to dog owners. And if you want to complain about dogs or talk about dogs, I'm now part of the club, so.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. Drinko.
I'm good. Thank you.
That's great to hear. Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Glazer.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Raffey.
Uh, I'm sorry we didn't get to meet Brian's dog. No picture. My, my rescue dog is snoring across the room over there. She usually sleeps through meetings. I have two announcements. One is that the Senior Center 506 Cafe on March 2nd has a St. Patrick's theme. If you've had any cravings for green desserts, this is your big chance. No green beer on the menu, I don't think. But that is March 2nd and it runs from 11:30 to 1:00 and it's curbside pickup for $10. And you can call the Senior Center in advance to reserve your lunch. 352-5678. And they're having the whole Irish menu, beef brisket sandwich, cabbage and sausage soup, apple salad and green desserts. So check that out. The other thing is that Heritage Days is running a fundraiser called Fill the Cart. Fairway has been very gracious in allowing us to have a fundraiser where people can buy a $10 ticket. And the winner will get to fill a grocery cart within a certain amount of time where they rush around the store and fill their cart. What Carla's holding up, $300 worth of food? Is that why the three fingers? Okay. So up to that amount.
And three minutes.
Yes, three minutes. So that should be pretty fun to watch. And so the first day that we're going to be selling tickets is this Saturday at Fairway between 10 and 2 o'clock, so $10 apiece. So hopefully that will be a successful fundraiser. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Schneider, please.
Hey, I think actually all the council got an email from resident Grant Jensen here back in January about snow removal. And that email was like, I think it was like 50 snow events ago. It seems like at this, at this pace. I did get a moment to, I, I spent a lot of time in, in Rod's Ward just because it's so nice and square and even with the streets to take a look at that. And boy, I, I really thought that, I do think this is something we, we should maybe discuss at some point in a study session. If we can, can we get the residents a little more efficient? Does that make, does that help our snowplow drivers out? And if, if it does look like there's something there, I would even like to get a snow, actual snowplow driver into one of the meetings so we can maybe understand that a little bit better. And also, as I alluded to earlier in the meeting, you know, it is our family members that pay kind of a price for a, a lot of involvement in, in, in city. And I want to give a shout out to my son who, who can't practice right now during meetings because his bedroom is, is right up above there. And, but he's working so hard for the talent show. And this is where I'm going to give, and I might've given him a shameless plug, but you'll, you'll understand why I'm going to give him another one. He has worked so hard. He, he writes his own songs and records and plays all the, I mean, like all the instruments. And you can hear him on Spotify, Ben Schneider. His song last summer that's up, I think he's put some more up, but there, he had a song out last summer called Ghost Boy. And it's so terrible for these artists. I really learned a lot in this, you know? It takes 100 plays and Ben's going to get one penny, 100 plays. So that, if I've mentioned that twice, that's why, because maybe I can, you know, get his earnings up to a nickel out of this thing. But it, it really highlights the need for live music. And that's why I want, how I wanted to bring this back to the, to the city. Cause there has been, I, I've, I'm hearing a lot of this. I don't know if it's because everyone's pent up and we've been in our basements now for 12 months. But, you know, I, I'd heard, you know, Garrett talk about a great idea of having music along in, in the new facility there. You know, we've had business owners that have talked about, you know, when the bridge is out, hey, let's get some festivities together. And, and I would really like to encourage more of that discussion because those Spotify earnings, that's just not going to make it for those guys. And, but not only that, but we can, we can, and, and I don't know if there's, there's probably limited role for, for council in this. But we, you know, we can set the tone and we can set the tone for a vibrant city that is festivus. And, and that's also reason number six for getting Four Lanes back. Cause if we do that, we're going to have a lot of traffic. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Bowfer.
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our guest is not with us, so we'll skip over to Mr. Kengas.
Did you get Chris or did I miss that?
Yeah, he had nothing for us this evening.
Okay. I just would, I'm going to put a plug in for some of our, our Waverly businesses. Today is National Margarita Day. So we have a handful of very fine Mexican restaurants in town, as well as some other establishments that you can procure your favorite frozen beverage, blended beverage if you wish. Though it is, you know, for most people, a, a school night or a work night. But anyways, it's still early. It's 5 o'clock somewhere or 5:30 somewhere. Anyway, so put a plug in for, for, for some of that. If not, then save it till Friday night and enjoy, have, have yourself a good night then. The other thing I wanted to kind of put out, I, I've had a few people that have contacted me with regards to the school vote and concerns with that or, or questions about that. And I have to remind them that that's the school board and that's not the city council. We don't really have a whole lot of say in that until the bond would be passed and then we're into negotiations for, uh, one of the properties is, is currently owned by the city. So that there's the discussion there. But that issue is with the school board and the school has put together a nice website that you can link to from WSR Schools page with questions and answers. And I believe they have another Zoom webinar question and answer session this Thursday night. That has a link for it on that website as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kengas. Just to segue from that exactly is, you know, the school bond issue is a very important discussion that people need to have and have a healthy discussion so that they understand it and know what their vote means. With that being said, let's not forget who we are as residents of Waverly and engage in civil dialogue over these matters and all matters. It's been pretty good so far, but as we get closer to Election Day, let's just keep that in mind. Some people, I, I know there's been some people that have already voted. So I know that it's a very passionate thing. We're talking about, you know, tax levies and, and those types of things continuing on past the, the current tax levy that's in place, you know, basically theoretically an extension of the current one. And that does affect people's, you know, bottom dollar. So we do need to be respectful that how taxation can affect people. And so they can be very passionate about that. I know that Dr. Raffey has made mention before, you know, sometimes we have to put this into perspective of, you know, something that makes a little bit more sense to us, like a pizza or a gallon of gas or something like that. And so this is very impactful to some people and how that will affect them in, in the future. So all I ask is that we keep it, you know, civil and educational. And if you have questions, ask the right people for the, the factual information from there. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion adjourn. Second.
Whoever you got, I got a motion and a second out of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.